All to order. The regular meeting of the City of Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Those of you viewing online, we have three commissioners in the commission chamber, and we have the other two commissioners are present by video. Commissioner Frederick, can you hear us? Commissioner Sobeluk? We can. All right. We're all linked. First item up is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business, Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Yes, there is one change to the Order of Business. Under number five, Engineering, we will be removing item E, the Development Agreement for American Bank Center on Street Construction. That will be present for you for the next commission meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the amended Order of Business? If not, I'd like a motion on the Order of Business as amended?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the amended Order of Business.
Second?
With a second. For those of you viewing online, the motion was by Commissioner Oderman, and the second is by Commissioner Walla. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of the amended Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items, Commissioners, that you wish to discuss on the consent agenda?
I just have one question on the contract for deed on the Elks Building. They have that in their section?
Yes.
So, um, if you need a self-ride, is that where that self-looting can happen? Or is that a parking lot with plenty of parking lots in it?
Mrs. Carlson or Mrs. Winko, you want to give a description?
Yes, absolutely. To answer Commissioner Sobeluk's question, this is several smaller lots downtown over by the Elks Building. It is not the Elks Building. It is adjacent lots, I believe that's currently being used as a parking structure. This contract for deed was satisfied a few years ago, and we just never completed the process. So, it is not a structure, it is a parking lot, empty space.
Okay, so we're just cleaning up?
Correct. As of 2018, my understanding, the contract for deed was satisfied. The city just never completed the transaction by issuing the appropriate quick claim deed, and that's what you have in front of you.
Okay, any other questions? Now I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Commissioner Frederick, second? Yep. Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk? Mr. Frederick? Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the consent agenda. Moving right along, we do have a public hearing at 5:00 PM, so if I run over, please, someone remind me. We'll go right into administration and finance, and the first item up, item A, is the 2021 Preliminary Budget Statement, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is the Preliminary Budget Statement, which will be sent to the county, and it serves for two purposes. One is to set the public hearing of our 2021 budget, which will be September 15th, 2020, and this letter also includes the requested property tax levy dollar based on the estimated taxable value, and that's according to our century codes. The tax levy total dollar amount will be $5,724,000. It's exactly the same amount that we have requested in the past, and of that total amount, the library and airport, which is part of our tax levy, will each receive the four mils or approximately $476,000, and then the general fund will receive 39.59 mils or approximately $4,762,000, and that's what we put into our budget for 2021 on the approximation of what we will receive in property tax.
Okay, our four mils on our sheet here say 481.
Pardon?
What we have, it says 481, not 470?
Oh, it says 481?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have mistaken on that one. Be 481.
Okay. And that's what the four mils are worth, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson on this statement? For the general public, our first budget hearing will be September 15th, 2020, and the second reading and final passage will be October 6th, 2020. So, first reading and the public hearing will be September 15th. Any questions, Commissioners, for Mrs. Carlson? Now I'd look for a motion on the 2021 Preliminary Budget Statement.
President, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick? Mrs. Sobeluk? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is our Chapter 25 Offense Amendment, and that'll be handled by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Every August, we do an annual review of the Criminal Code. The reason why we do it in August is because in the legislative years, that's when the laws change, August 1 of that year. So, we do this so that we keep the code current, and we keep it updated. So, these amendments are simply clarification and bringing the code up to speed and making it current. You do have in front of you, there's a reference to the fireworks ordinance that we've gradually and continually tried to update over the years, and that is also one of those. And then we've also added a provision with regard to rummaging through garbage receptacles as a, under the disorderly conduct statute. So, these are just changes in a minor amendments to the Criminal Code section.
Any questions, comments? I do have, I guess mine is not so much a question or a comment. I do have one concern with the Section B of the 25.06.030, the retail tobacco dealer, the first offense. I don't know if I'm in favor of supporting the suspension of the license for one day on a first offense. I just, I have some concerns with the amount of turnover that a lot of these convenience stores and area they're having. If we would have maybe a larger fine and have the offense so that from the first offense, that would start their year as the year progresses then? Is that how we track it right now?
Mr. President, just to clarify, the reason why that particular section is in this amendment, it's more of a clarification, that was part of the last packet that the commission approved with regard to those tobacco updates. The reason why it's in this one particularly is because our code is set up where there's a penalty section, and then there's a description section that correlates and outlines the, basically, the suspension and the fines. So, those two sections need to match one another. So, if the commission has an issue with regard to the penalty, then that would be something that we would have to address as a whole, reviewing again that tobacco ordinance and statute, if that makes sense.
It does.
I think we need to do that, just because I had a couple reach out to me concerned, and I think they would like to be present.
And that is certainly something that I have discussed with Deputy City Administrator Carlson about having those issues in further discussions. Certainly something that can come back in front of this commission for further discussion.
I think we need to have a look at that again. I just know that these retail outlets are dealing with a lot of turnover, and they are, they are trying. I know they're trying to comply. It just, they can put everything in place, and if you have an employee that just doesn't care, it doesn't matter. And then they're being punished. That employee probably leaves, pays the fine, the hundred dollars, and never even attends the tobacco cessation program. So, my, you know, my concern is that I would like to see us look at that again. In the past, there was discretion on the first offense. There was a fine, but there was discretion of the city administrator if they wanted to suspend the license. I think you remember that chief, right? And it would, it basically came down to how egregious, once they really looked at the, what happened, it was. And I don't know if you'd be in favor of that again, having the city administrator having that ability, or we just pull it completely out of there. I would like to see it tracked too, from whenever the first offense is, that starts their calendar year for all the other offenses. It does, we just don't go off of January 1 to December 31st. So, we track, let's say they have a first offense in July, it takes a whole year that we track it to July of the next year. It doesn't end, you know, in December.
Correct. And Mr. President, to answer that question, I believe a lot of that internal tracking is done with Southwest District Health, so that would have to be a sit-down discussion with them, as well as how they're tracking that, and how that coincides with the records that are given to the city when we have to do enforcement, and how we determine what's the first and the second offense.
We can certainly put together a working group and bring back some new ideas to the commission and go from there with it.
But it would be my recommendation to, as the code sits currently,
Okay.
this would be to make everything consistent. If you change it after that, absolutely, you certainly can have those discussions.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion. Let's see, is this a public hearing? No, this is the first reading. We'll have the public hearing in the second reading.
Correct.
So, if there are no comments or questions on Chapter 25 Amendment, I'd look for a motion. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? So, I think we can put together a group and come up with something. Okay. Any other comments, questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick? Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk? Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is our city lots, and Deputy City Administrator Carlson, you'll be handling this.
Thank you, President Decker. The item for city lots is that on the work session on July 21st, I brought forward that there was two lots that were brought forward to myself and planning that would be interested in buying the city lot next to their business for expansion. The one is east of South Main and next door to the Uppen Thai Food, adjacent from Lady Jay's, and that value you asked for is 27,000. And then the second one is the lot west of Visionary Eye Clinic, which is on First Street East, and that's assessed at 37,500, also for expansion. With both of these lots, staff is looking for directions on how the commissioners would like to proceed, and as Attorney Winko had mentioned before, that there is different ways you can do this. So, I'm looking at, do you want to sell the lots or not? Do you want to put a minimum price on the lots and sell them that way? Do you want to put out for sealed bids, selling to the highest bidder, or offer to a broker to sell with a minimum purchase and possible a set commission? So, I'm looking forward to, do you want to move forward with this? Both gentlemen that own the businesses have been asking, they have been taking care of those lots, they are city-owned lots, but they've been taking care, and they are pretty much in the area of their business, so mostly it's used for their business and things. So, we just need to know directions of what the city commission would like to do with these lots.
I guess I would, I would look to our legal counsel and do we have to put them up for bid?
It would be my recommendation that the commission do that, to maximize the potential fair market value of the parcel. I think the statutes as they're drafted support that, and of course, the individuals that are adjacent certainly can bid and put in whatever dollar value that they feel appropriate, but it would be my recommendation to do it that way.
Any other questions, Commissioners? I agree with that. I agree, we should, whatever the assessed value, for the one next to Uppen Thai, you know, that's 27,000, if that's what we have it as valued at, that should be the minimum starting bid, and the one next to the Eye Clinic, if it's 37,500, that should be the min. Unless Commissioners feel otherwise. I think we have the right to refuse. I mean, if nobody bids any higher than that, we have a right to refuse any of the bids if that's our minimum and none are that high.
And to address that specifically, the bid, whether it's published, noticed, posted, we would want to specifically identify that the city would reserve the right to reject any and all bids, and that can certainly set the minimum bid as well, so that the bidders obviously understand that that's the threshold.
Okay. So, I guess we're looking at setting the minimum at the assessed value?
Yep.
And then putting them up, advertising them as bid?
Okay.
Close bid.
And then do, Attorney Winko, do I need a motion on this because of those lots, city lots? Do we need a motion or just a direction?
Deputy Administrator Carlson, I would suggest that the board make the motion and approve the, you to proceed in that direction in putting those up for sale.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to set the minimum price for the two city lots, along with putting them up for, in the bid process, sealed bid process?
Yes, essentially, yes.
Any Commissioners opposed to that? Okay. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President? You know, the next item on the agenda is those additional city lots. Are we just going to wait and see if other people come forward and are interested in those city lots that we have on that, on the additional list, on the agenda? Or do we want to do the same with those lots too?
I think we need to dig into the other lots a little bit.
Okay, all right.
And President Decker and Commissioner Oderman, the reason that the other list is there, which I will state, was it was asked that what else do we have out there? But I'd only provided a list, and I haven't even dug into them or anything. I just gave a list with the assessed values, so.
So, the motion would be to, to put these two lots up for sale at the minimum assessed value, and put them on the market for, under a sealed bid.
So moved.
Do I have a motion to put them on the market? And a second by Commissioner Sobeluk? Okay. The motion was by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk? Mr. Frederick? Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Carlson, you'll carry right into these lots?
Correct. For my report, I just, as requested by the city commission on the 21st, you were asking, what other kind of lots do we have out there, city lots that are vacant and/or parking lots? And I provided you a list that the assessing department put together for me, what the lots are, and also includes the actual big lot that's next to the middle school on that. But nothing that I dug into, I was just giving you a list of what do we have out there, and also what the assessed values of them are. On that list, the last three that start with 7,000 on there, those are BNSF property, and we might have a lease with them, but it still says city ownership, so we may have a lease with them or something, but again, I did not go in and dive into them or anything. I just wanted to provide you with the list and where they were actually on the map.
And they are the currently the parking lots that are adjacent to the railroad, adjacent to the depot, so. I think, I think, at least my idea was to look at, we have certain lots that are sitting there that have a lot of potential. We have the one that's sitting beside the Ivanhoe, the original spot for the downtown square. We have a couple other outliers, and you know, if we can put them up, Commissioners would want to do so, put them up. I'd like to see some of those lots at least be in filled. I know we have that one outlier too, way on the east side of town.
And President Decker, if you, if that is the wish of the commission, we could put a small committee together and dive into it?
Yeah.
And give a better report of what they are, what they're next to, what we've done with them, and if that would be something that you would want.
And what their value is too.
Yep.
I think that would be helpful. I know you have some values on them, but is that just, is that the assessed value?
Assessed value.
Okay.
That's only the assessed value. So, if you'd, if you'd want to do that, I can.
Any, any other discussion, Commissioners, on this? Well, we'll look forward to a little bit more information on these city lots.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, next item up is the library annual report, and that'll be handled by Library Director Ennin.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. So, I am bringing to you today some highlights from our 2019 annual report, and also, we'll take just a minute at the end to talk about some of what's going on at the library, particularly in this very not usual year. So, I'd just let everyone know that our entire 2019 annual report and appendants will be available also on the library's website, starting tomorrow, so you'll be able to see everything there if you'd like to look at it. Commissioners, you saw these things already in your packets. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, I will begin the annual report talking about what the library is really about, and you might think that it's really about books, or it's really about DVDs, or whatever it is you come in to pick up, really about programs. But in the end, library, all right, I will, is there for the people and for the community. The other things are resources for you, but the most important thing is our visitors. So, to give you a little highlight of who, why you made use of the library and its services during 2019. Visits to the main library, and of course, this does not count anyone who came to the bookmobile, who came to a program at another location, or who came to the library sites in Midora and Fairfield. But to the main library, we saw 86,285 visitors last year. We had 18,502 people come in to use our computers. The wifi, which people connect to both from inside and outside the building, 108,414 connections last year. We had 33,976 individuals attend our programs, some in the building, some in other places. Our website was new, if you might remember last spring, so these are website visits since last March. It's not reflective of the entire year, but 40,833 people came to the library's website for information of one kind or another. Registered borrowers are those individuals who have a current library card, so you can come to our programs and use other things without that, but if you want to check something out and take it home, or check something out, even an ebook or something, you need a card. And we do have 11,233 registered borrowers as of December 31st. New in our report this year, Facebook followers, so we have 2,320 friends on our Facebook site. Down in the corner there, important numbers, all the numbers are important, but we're highlighting some particularly, and this is particularly showing our registered borrowers where they're from. So, 8,892 of those individuals live in the City of Dickinson. 1,679 of them are in the larger Stark County community, 253 from Billings County, 123 from Slope County. 207 rural fee cards, and those are individuals from some of the other surrounding counties, mostly Dunn and Hedinger, that actually pay a fee to have a card so that they can use our library. They pay a fee because they're not part of the tax base that supports the library, so that's how they do their part. And then that other 69 that is library staff, that is temporary workers that come to and work in Midora for the summer, they can pay a fee and have a card to use during the summer, that is for institutional cards, so a teacher that has a special card for their class, the Care Center in Richardson, other places like that that have an institutional card. So, that's what those other numbers are about. Next slide, please, Des, this isn't working. So, then you come to the more traditional thing that perhaps you think of when you think of a library, and that's the collections that we have of materials and information for people to use. So, on the side, you see it in percentages of the overall collection, and then correlating to number of total items. So, you think of books in the library, right now, our total collections, only about 55% of them are the traditional book, but at that, that's 85,167 items. But we also have ebooks at about 20% of our collection, and there are 31,115 ebooks that you can download through the library. Audio books, less than 2% of our collection now, but 2,953 circulating items. And then the reason for that change, more people are wanting to see electronic audio that they can download to their device, and so we do have 21,000. And so, we do have 21,900 e-audio items that are available. DVDs, a hardworking collection, those really circulate, but 10,948 items. 1,176 e-video, so unlike the audiobooks, people want the DVD more in the hard format still. Other items, 1,517. I always like to talk about what those other items are. So, that's things like book club kits, we have learning bundles for kids, we have state park passes that you can check out from the library, so we have lots of other non-traditional things, and we do have quite a few of those items as well. Moving on to the number of times, then, that those materials are accessed. So, total items in our collections, 154,957, that's counting the electronic as well as the hard format. And those items were accessed 166,479 times last year. Of those, our physical items circulated, 53,611 were children's materials, and 49,918 were adult materials. Over on the side, it shows you that again in percentages, so the total of our physical items, 103,529 of them, that's about 62% of use of library materials. Downloadables, that's ebooks, e-audio, all of those kinds of things, a little over 16%, more than 28,000 items. Database retrievals, don't think about that too often, but the people that use our databases, that's Ancestry, that's Mangle Languages, that's articles, and online newspapers, et cetera, 31,123 of those items downloaded this last year. Interlibrary loans, that 1,411 items are those that we borrowed for people in this community from other libraries. And then, you also see there, 1% of our overall materials are those things that we loan out to other libraries, a little bit more than 2,000 items last year, most of them going to other citizens of North Dakota. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, this one is a little bit fun. This is talking about our programs, and I always like to include a couple of pictures, so I'll describe the pictures from left to right. That first picture is a group of teens that had came in and successfully completed one of the library's escape rooms. That's one of our new programs this last year. In the middle, you see someone from the national park that was here. We had a moon landing party last summer, celebrating the 50th anniversary of the landing on the moon. You see that, next to that, then on the right, one young lady who was a part of our space camp. So, that was a bunch of learning activities we did for kids to help them get a little feeling of what it might be like to be an astronaut. We do have lots and lots of programs, not just storytimes, but Lego clubs and STEAM programs. New things this year, we have a Books and Brews Book Club that meets offsite at Deportus, barbering shop. We did escape rooms, as I said, we were part of a community room, community read program as well. The overall numbers, last year, we had 209 events that were geared specifically towards children, and we had 17,690 kids attend our different events. 53 events for those teens, the 12 to 18-year-olds. We had 5,522 people in attendance at those, which is always exciting to us, teens can be hard to get sometimes. And then, a growing area, we had 58 events for adults last year, and we had 10,764 adults participate in library programming events over last year. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, then we come to the money, which of course is important, too. Our library expenditures, as you would probably expect, about 68% of that is actually staff expenses, so $734,851 last year spent on staff. Collections, those items that people check out and take away, we spent $143,000, that's about 13% of our budget. And other operating, which includes everything from electricity to programming supplies to custodial, all of the rest. About 18% of our budget are $197,000 plus dollars. Our revenues, we're fortunate in that that pie is spread out a little bit, but by far, our largest funder, of course, is the city of Dickinson, $520,312 last year, about 47% of our budget. Next largest being Stark County at $286,777, and going on down from there, I won't read them all, but Billings County, Billings County Schools, Slope County. 10% of our budget is state government revenues, most importantly, our state-owned libraries, which we get because everybody else does their part, and that's what that formula is based on. Then also small pieces, but we do have donations largely from the friends of the library, and other miscellaneous revenue, that's room rentals, fines, various things like that. But the important, the big numbers at the end, our total revenue last year was $1,099,010. Our total expenditures was $1,075,324. Important to note that the biggest part of the difference between those two is money that comes from the counties and is set aside towards the replacement of the bookmobile. So, that's what the difference in those numbers is. And our spending per capita is $27. So, we, your library spent $27 for you last year, and I hope that you took advantage of that. Next slide. Thank you. So, as you know, this year has been not exactly usual, but I did want to point out to you some of the things that the library has been doing to try to serve our community even in this unusual time. So, after we had first closed, the first thing we started doing was sending people library materials by mail. We did send out 170 packages, around 500 items. Little while after that, the next thing we started doing was delivering curbside. And we have thus far delivered more than 1,500 items to people as a curbside delivery, 238 of those deliveries, this was as of about a week ago, all of these numbers. We do continue to offer curbside, even though we're open, so that if someone doesn't feel like it's particularly safe for them to come out to a public place, we're still trying to give them a service option. We started doing our storytimes as videos online, released at the same time storytime would normally be during April and May, those storytimes, we had 7,323 video views of those. Then, as we came into summer reading program, we're starting to be open, but we still are, we're not doing the in-person programming. So, we have had, again, as of last week, 12,199 views of our summer reading virtual content. That's storytimes, that's some special programs, and surprisingly, we've done some trivia videos. People don't comment on it a lot, but they must like them because they keep coming and doing the new one next week. A little over 2,000 people have done those. The other thing we've done this summer is create pickup bags. So, normally, kids would come in for STEAM and for storytime, and we have activities we do. So, what we've done this year is put those supplies together into a little bag that they could come and pick up either curbside or at the desk, and take it home, and still be able to view the video and do their craft, and things as they have been able to do in the past. So, this year's summer reading program, we've never done a virtual program before. Some of the things we're trying will be forever things, and one of them is the new online tool we're using for people to be able to log their reading in the summer reading, and that's, it's called Beanstack. And our theme this year was Summer of Wonder. So, in Beanstack, you go on and you log your reading for yourself, instead of filling out a slip and dropping it off at the library. And as you do those participations, you earn a badge. So, you've got a picture of what your badges look like down there in the corner. The numbers that were up there were as of last week, but that's showing how many kids, how many children, how many teens, how many adults. We had good participation, especially given the year that we were doing. And most particularly, we did something new this year also, in that we gave people a goal, or a stretch that we called was "Your Complete." So, this is what we challenged you to do. In the case of the early literacy, we challenged them to complete 25 badges, and those, we had 39 kids that completed 25 badges, all of those did 250 different learning activities of some kind during the summer. We had 72 children that completed the entire program, that's 2,500 minutes of reading. And of course, every 100 minutes counted, whether you finished it all or not, but we did have 72 that went the whole way, if you will. Of those 41 teens, 32 of them completed our challenge of 3,000 minutes of reading, which is pretty awesome. And then, adults, our adult activity is really high this year, make of that what you will, but 3,750 pages was our challenge, and we had 65 adults that did that this summer. Next page, please. So, as upcoming, like everyone else, we're watching the current environment and how things are going, and trying to decide what's the right thing to do. But we do have a few fun things that we're going to do for sure, whether, irregardless of when the right timing is for doing in-person programs. One of the things we're doing that's brand new is called the Rubber Ducky Club, and this is the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, that is the recommendation that for a kid to be ready for kindergarten. Sounds like a lot, but actually, if you read one book at bedtime every day, in less than three years, you'll have read 1,000 books. So, the other fun thing about the Rubber Ducky Club is that there will be milestones along the way, so even if you don't get the whole way, when you've read 100 books to your child, you're going to say, wow, you know, we've made this milestone, and there's a little prize and a little recognition that goes with that. Right below that, Super Sibling Award, this is something that I don't know if anybody else is doing, but we're going to, and this goes hand in hand with the Rubber Ducky Club, so that's saying that older child that's maybe just learning to read or something can read, and it's, we've set a little benchmark, it's only 30 books, but if they read 30 books over the course of however long it takes them to do, to their younger sibling in the Rubber Ducky Club, they're going to get this award for being a super sibling. So, we're pretty excited about that. New, we're the first library in North Dakota to do it, but we're becoming part of a national thing that's called the Podcast Brunch Club, so it's like a book club, but it's for podcasts. So, if you enjoy listening to podcasts, there's a topic each month, and people will come together and talk about that, what they've been listening to and learning about. Spooktacular Mini Challenge, that's going to be a book challenge. It will be for all ages, this is just happens to be the banner for the 6 to 11-years-old, but it'll be, as a mini reading challenge in October. And ongoing right now, up in the corner, we have a private individual that has sponsored some prizes for a mask contest, so the masks is not any of our favorite fun thing to do, but those people who would like to can either decorate or create their own mask, is one category, they can make a video about masks, or they can create a meme, and the winners of each of those will receive a $50 Amazon gift card, as I said, sponsored by an individual in our community. And then, last slide? Thank you, Daz. So, library hours, that is our current hours. We're currently open 9:00 AM to 4:45 PM. I am not certain when we're going to extend into evenings and weekends, but we do have several openings, and we're getting ready to interview, and as soon as we have those people hired and trained, we do very much look forward to having some evening and weekend hours again, too. Questions?
I think the public will appreciate that once we can go back to some normal hours, so. Any questions for Ms. Ennen? Alright, thank you. Okay, we have a swearing in of one of our officers. Chief Dossinger?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I would like to introduce a new team member of the Dickinson Police Department to the commission and to the community. Officer Christian Sanders started with the Dickinson PD on June 29th. Officer Sanders is from Idaho. He served in the US Army from 2010 until 2018, achieving the rank of sergeant. Officer Sanders served two combat tours in Afghanistan. At this time, I'd like to invite Officer Sanders to the podium, to be sworn in by Deputy Administrator Carlson.
So that you can read along?
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, raise your right hand. And I, state your name, will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I, Christian Sanders, will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson to the best of my ability.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson to the best of my ability.
And that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards implicit in my employment.
And that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards implicit in my employment.
And in furtherance of the best public interest.
And in furtherance of the best public interest.
There you go. You're good. You can sign that, and I've already signed it for that.
Congratulations. Well, you want to pull us in a little about yourself?
Well, my name's Christian Sanders, I'm from small-town Kino, Idaho. Took eight years in the United States Army as an infantryman. I've been married to my... What's that? You were an infantryman, or you were in the Army?
I was an infantryman. I was.
I've been married to my beautiful wife, Blakely, for three years, who I would like to thank for pushing me to pursue this adventure. We've lived in Dickinson for about a year and a half, bought a house on the south side, working on a family kind of thing. Yeah, that's it.
Welcome aboard. We're very happy to have you here, and I hope your experience so far has been a good one. I know Chief Dossinger's keeping you busy. You guys have a full schedule every day that you're out there, so, and we really appreciate all the work you do.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else, commissioners? Alright, well, welcome aboard, and congratulations, and looking forward to you being in our community.
Thanks, guys, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Alright, next item up, we have a public hearing for utility easement vacation, and Assistant City Engineer Marshick will be handling that.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. The item that we had the public hearing for is a vacation in Cook Meadows Hills for utility easement. These were large lots that a developer is looking to get this vacation so that they can split these large lots, and new easement will be added in when they do that lot split. So, they're just kind of shifting things around to do, I believe this was our three lots, the larger apartment, and they're going to come forward after this and move ahead with some smaller density development.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners, for Mrs. Marshick? This is an easement vacation for the Cooks Meadow Hills Fourth Edition. There are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward or call in, you may call 701-456-7006 if you have any concerns or comments for city staff. Again, this is a public hearing, if anyone has any concerns about this easement, this utility easement vacation, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns or questions. Again, you can call in 456-7006. And this would be Resolution 30-2020. And this would be Resolution 30-2020, if I'm correct?
That is correct.
Anyone from the public? Seeing no one has any concerns or questions on this utility easement vacation for the Cook Meadows Hills Fourth Edition, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any concerns or questions for Mrs. Marshick or staff on this All right. Now I look for a motion on this utility easement vacation, Resolution 30-2020. We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the resolution granting the utility easement vacation. Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. This is also the time, if you have any comments that are not on the agenda, public comments not on the agenda, you may call in and voice those, or come to the podium and voice your concerns to the city commission.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Anyone from the public have any comments or concerns that were not on the agenda Anyone from the public? Seeing and hearing no concerns or comments that weren't on the agenda this evening, we'll close that portion, and we'll go back to our agenda, normal agenda. And if nothing from public safety this evening, we'll go into engineering. Mrs. Marshick, we have a task order, a couple of them from Apex.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. The first item is a general construction engineering service task order with Apex Engineering. This is for an agreement with Apex that allows us to provide, have them provide us on-call construction inspection and administration services for various city of Dickinson public infrastructure projects. This is an hourly agreement, which is generally invoiced back to the developer for our new city of Dickinson multi-party construction and funding agreement. So these costs should not exceed ten percent of the construction cost of the project unless something unusual would arise, and that would, we would have to approve any kind of change above that amount. So the city engineering staff recommends approval of this task order with Apex Engineering. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Marshick on Task Order 14? Any questions from Commissioners? Hearing no questions, I look for a motion on the task order with Apex Engineering. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Marshick, you have another task order for the downtown lighting circuit?
That's correct, President Decker, Commissioners. The next item is another Apex Engineering Task Order. This is for an analysis of our downtown lighting circuitry. This would provide us future lighting standards within downtown, which there are five different sections, I believe, utilizing our city of Dickinson standard decorative light. This is also an hourly agreement with a not-to-exceed total amount for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and would include a study or a process of how we can go about updating our downtown circuitry. There's also some phases included with this agreement to move forward with the circuitry for the American Bank Center. As their agreement would move forward at the next meeting, this is included in Apex's, in this task order with Apex. So that could be another portion, and that's included in this not-to-exceed amount. Do you have any questions on this item?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this task order number fifteen? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on Task Order Number Fifteen.
Mr. Prezal, motion approved, Task Order Fifteen.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments for city staff on this task order? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up, we have a load-pass agreement. Mrs. Marshick?
President Decker, Commissioners, this is, load-pass is a permitting system that we use with other counties throughout the state and a few other municipalities for overweight and oversized load permitting, and we're a participating community. This agreement included in the packet authorizes myself as Assistant City Engineer to have voting privileges as part of the load-pass advisory committee. So I'm asking for your approval.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this load-pass permit agreement? Basically, we're designating her to be on this advisory committee.
That would be correct.
Any questions or comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this designation agreement. We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the appointment of Mrs. Marshick to the advisory, the load-pass advisory committee.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a I-94 East Business Loop Right-Away Temporary Construction Easement Agreement. And again, Assistant City Engineer Marshick, you'll be handling this.
That's correct, President Decker, Commissioners. The attachments in your packet include multiple agreements that go along with this temporary construction easement. This is part of the ND DOT project on the East Business Loop from 10th Avenue West, or East, excuse me, to Interstate Exchange Exit 64. The attachments that need signatures and approval by city commission is a preliminary, excuse me, temporary construction easement for parcel 1-1, which is shown in the preliminary right-of-way plat that was included in the packet. A memorandum agreement conveying the DOT, the use of the property, a compensation and parcel breakdown for the agreement, agreement for entry and construction with no compensation, and a notification and appraisal waiver. That's all part of this process for the temporary construction easement. There's a pretty explanatory memo as part of this packet also. So I'd like to entertain any questions that you might have about this item.
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this agreement? All parties are satisfied that are private?
That is correct.
Any other questions from Commissioners? This is part of the project that will begin next year?
That's correct also.
That's the improvement of our East Business Loop. Okay, if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on this easement agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman. Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll keep you on deck, I guess, in the batter's box, so...
I'm up.
Yep. We have a KLJ task order for the Millen overlay. Again, will be handled by Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
Thank you again, President Decker, Commissioners. This item is a task order with KLJ Engineering for our 2021 Millen overlay project. So this agreement before you that was included in the packet is for professional services for preliminary engineering design bidding and construction administration associated with our 2021 Millen overlay project. This is set at an hourly rate with a not-to-exceed amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for basic study and report phases. And part of this is to get things moving without knowing our exact budget for the 2021 Millen overlay until the budget numbers are finalized. We just want to get KLJ under task and get started moving this project forward. So city engineering staff recommends approval of this task order for Project 202101 with KLJ. Do you have any questions on this item?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this task order with KLJ? And this is for a future project in 2021? This is Task Order Number 2004-01117. Am I correct? That's where I'm reading off page.
That is correct.
Okay.
President Decker?
Mr. Zurov?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Marshick's comments about the 2021 Millen overlay. Previously, we've waited too long to look at some of the proposed streets. This is giving us a long time to look at the proposed streets, to actually look at the conditions before we have snowfall on them, and to get ahead of, get ahead. And I think it's real positive to move forward and be ahead of the game this year in identifying these streets that need to be done.
And I appreciate you guys being proactive, getting ahead of it for us, so... Any other questions or comments for staff? Now I'd look for a motion on this task order.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the task order with KLJ.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Not hearing any, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And last item up, well, we pulled that, actually. So the development agreement with American Bank Center will be on the next meeting in August. All right, we'll move into public works. And Mr. Zurov, you have a Highlands Engineering Task Order for Westridge Construction.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. This task order is to provide construction engineering services for Westridge Drive, Rough Rider Boulevard, Legend Drive, along with a small portion of State Avenue, and we're including some settlements on 15th Street also. These services include construction management, staking, material testing, and project closeout. This has been a many-year project in the making. Hopefully, the settlement is now finally completed, and we will get Westridge Drive looking good again. And then also the striping is looking at being bid next week to include some additional striping on this project. But staff recommends approval, and I will entertain any questions the commission might have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Zurov on this project, this task order with Highlands? When we do stripe it this time, we're gonna determine if it's one or two lanes, right?
It's planned, yes, planned as one.
One lane? Okay. So we're clear. Any other questions? We're looking at completing that all yet this year.
Yes, I think the last couple of weeks, probably, I think, last I heard, they were gonna get to moving on this the middle of August. Coming up quicker, I can't believe it's that time of year.
Yeah, it's August, so... Okay, if there are no questions or comments on this task order, and this is Task Order There are no more comments or questions for staff, I'd look for a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve Task Order 201912-03.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is Northern Improvement Millen Overlay Change Order for First Avenue West. Mr. Zurov?
Yes, thank you, President Decker, Commission. This change order includes the paving for the Water Main Replacement Project 202007 on First Avenue West from Second Street to Third Street. It also includes full-width Millen overlay, along with some curb and gutter improvements on the west side of the street. Total cost for the addition to this contract is forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. Staff recommends approval. I did want to mention that it is broke up into multiple phases. Once the Water Main project is completed, we will prep for the asphalt repair portion of this change order, which is thirteen thousand. Once that's done, at that time, we can still not continue with a full Millen overlay, depending on the outcome of the development agreement with American Bank Center.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Zurov on this change order? Okay, any questions for Mr. Zeroff on this change order? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the change order.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
I'll bring him back.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zeroff.
Thank you.
We have no items this evening in planning or building and code enforcement. We'll move on to item ten, which is commission. Commissioners, do you have any items that you wish to bring up that were not on the agenda this evening? Any items, Commissioners? Hearing no commission concerns or questions, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.